Welcome, everybody, to the Commissioner meeting. We'll go around the room and have you introduce yourself and start with.
Okay, Melody Martinson, Shoto, Kansa.
Ray Schmidt, Fairfield, Montana.
Carla Doncaster from Shoto.
Sam Carlson, Commissioner.
Dick Snellman, Commissioner.
Joe Delbo, Commissioner.
Austin Moira, Senator.
Paula Jack, Native Clerk and Recorder.
Thank you. I didn't see minutes.
No minutes.
Okay, not a problem.
Click recorder's lacking.
No, no. Next item on the agenda, road encroachments, which we have none. Next item is sextons for the cemeteries. The bids were open. There's still two in Limbo, the one in Power and the Beck community. The gentleman that was doing the sexton work decided not to bid again, so that has to be re-advertised. And there's a...
Which two?
Yeah, which two?
Which two cemeteries?
Uh, Power and Beck.
Beck's not in the cemetery name.
Oh.
What is it?
Is it in...
Emmanuel.
Emmanuel, there you go, sorry.
Beck is the old name.
It's the Beck community.
Yeah, right. I still call it the Beck cemetery.
Yeah, nobody does.
Always have, yeah.
But that one will be rebid. And hopefully comes out. They haven't given the Commissioners the names yet, so that'll be probably at the next meeting. Any comments on that?
So it doesn't take any action at this point, huh?
Right.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is a Kosky tax abatement. And to date, we have not had any objection or letters of approval on it.
Haven't heard anything from anybody.
No comment.
No comment.
I don't receive any.
Nope, I haven't either.
But like I said at the last meeting, it checks all the boxes. It's a small business and it's not going to be a tax shift.
I don't have a problem with it at all. I think it's probably a good thing.
So we'll...
I would move to approve that tax abatement.
I'll second that.
I close the hearing, yeah. I'll do that.
Oh, yeah.
We did open it last...
That's right.
...meeting and so we'll open the meeting to close it and then...
Now I'll make my motion.
Okay?
Okay.
I'll move to approve it.
And I'll second.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a comment after the fact, is that we'll have to approve a resolution next time.
Okay.
It has to be by a resolution.
A resolution?
Yeah.
I'll make an over there.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is the courthouse seal.
We only got one bid on that and it was from Jeff Jaeger. It wasn't a sealed bid, it was by email, but...
No other?
No other bid, so I don't see any problem with it, so I would move to approve that. The bid was for twenty-three thousand...
Thank you.
Twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars from Jaeger Painting.
The last time they did the seal, it was twenty thousand dollars, so...
Okay.
In the way prices of everything have gone up, I was pretty pleased with that.
Was it three years ago that you...
Yeah, I think it has been three.
Three or five?
No, it's been three because they told us that we needed to do it within the next two or three years and this is like, we're pushing it.
You know, I took a picture, because didn't Bobby and Kathy do it last time?
Yep, yep, and Jeff helped him.
I'll have to look up and see.
I can probably find it.
I think this is... My memory is telling me this is the third year because Bob told us we needed to do the second seal within two or three years, so of course we put it off as long as we could and then we'll be good for quite a while.
Did you move to accept that?
I haven't.
Did you second that?
Did I move?
Yep.
I thought you started to and then...
I agree.
Then I was in it.
Yeah.
Yes, I will move to approve.
Okay, I'll second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the meeting is Ferris egg covenant. So, Austin?
Yeah, so Doug Ferris' property, I think you guys probably know more about related floodplain, but he's also looking to put a house in the septic, but it's got a head covenant on it. The house location's way up on kind of the bench, it's not anywhere near where the floodplain was. So we went out there to test it this fall. Everything was good. It basically just needs the head covenant relocated. I didn't have any issues with it at all.
So Paula, do we need a resolution to do that?
Yep, we'll have to do that resolution next.
So we might as well just table it for...
I'll table it.
Till the next meeting?
Next meeting, okay.
It's something we do fairly regularly.
Yeah.
There's a write-down, so I think it's still going to be pretty cold for a while.
Yeah, I think Doug will be fine with that.
But thanks, Austin.
Thank you, yeah.
Austin General is speaking proximate to show where is this property?
Um, let's see, so if you're, sorry, I don't know my highway names, but on your way out to Dunton, right when you kind of start going down near the Teton River there, that's the property.
Right before the bridge, there's like...
On the north side.
On the north side, so it's about five miles east of Shoto on the left side.
Yeah, right.
From my house, it's probably four miles from Shoto. Because the green gins on the slope, that's the five-mile mark from where Jeff and I live.
Oh, okay. All right.
So west of the river.
Yeah, west. Yeah, west of it.
We didn't have this on here. What's that? We have to have the seal board.
No, that's for the next meeting. I'll just put it in there. It's on the agenda for the sixteenth.
The next...
Is there a motion to table it?
Sure, I'll move to table.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item, and Paula, would you like to discuss this? It's redistricting procedures.
So every ten years, the census is taken and the legislature comes up and decides, they go through and decide the population, some of it's on registered voters, and they try to equal out each house district to equal population. But we have an extra house district, so that kind of changed everything. And it's still up in the air, we really have had no direction on how to do this. The only thing that I know is that by law states anytime we make precinct boundaries and that's what's going to change. It's not necessarily that we can't change the house district, but the house district line changed, so now we have to change the precinct. So the State Library works with this and the house district... The house district, I've got a map up here. So the house district is going to be split between House District Seventeen and then the new one will be Eighteen, we got equal. So it literally kind of follows the precinct down, we think. So it'll follow Precinct One down. It'll work with Six, but then it shoots right straight down. So I think we have, I believe we're going to have to put additional into Precinct Six. But we're still waiting for total direction on that. And then House District Eighteen, of course, goes all the way to just north of Helena. It goes all the way down. I only have Teton County done, but we believe it's following this line. They just didn't listen to my request all the way to follow the precinct lines, but we think it follows this. But we've got two pictures that we're not sure, so as soon as the State Library did give us a preliminary one late yesterday afternoon. And so it does look like it follows the precinct down until it hits that Precinct Seven cornerway here.
So we'd be taking away from Precinct Seven and adding to Precinct Six, which is power.
Right, right.
Precinct Seven is Fairfield.
Precinct Power, yep, is Fairfield. Don't have much choice. We have to follow what the state law is requiring us to do. I do not have the impact of what the, how many voters it's going to change or how many residences it's going to change because until we get our GIS person back, yeah, until Danny can work with the State Library, they're going to have an overlay for her to lay on that and figure it out so that we can tell. Thanks, Alan. So right now, we're just...
So do we have any input as Commissioners into the process or is it strictly the Legislature?
Strictly the Legislature. We had ample time for comment and I commented ample times. But it has to be done within forty-five days that it was submitted to the Secretary of State's office. The Secretary of State's office received it on the twenty-second of February, which puts us at April seventh. And I believe that our county Commission meeting is April sixth and I have the resolution.
So we do have to act on it then?
We do have to act on it, we have to, yep. And we probably will, and we'll have a public hearing. We have to have a public hearing, which will be that second week of March. But I don't have any concrete figures as to the impact. So... You can have as many precincts in a house district as needed, but you can only have one house district in a precinct.
That's it?
Yeah. So right now, Precinct Seven, which is a Fairfield, is split into two house districts as the proposed new lines. So we'll probably we'll just move Precinct Six over that line. And I believe that's all the gold of Honda spades and all that down in there, so. Sure, absolutely.
Would that mean that you would have to add it, I think, add a precinct?
No, we're just going to move precinct boundaries. So Precinct Six, the blue one behind you, will just move out to the left towards the west. So if you see the purple seventeen, six, that new, here, you take, you take your... So what that does is it just pulls that down. And we're not really sure where all that is yet, that's what we're...
And that's just voting precincts.
That's just...
So it's not, well, I mean, the different house, who their representative is for the house is going to change.
Yes, yes.
But other than that, in the county, as far as the county government, it doesn't change.
Representation. Doesn't change, no. Doesn't change, did you want?
Yeah.
Because it's kind of...
Just causes more work for the election crew.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's...
So it may add a precinct.
It will not add a precinct. We're not, we're just going to change the boundaries. So we have to give a legal clearance and then, and hopefully with the new voting program system, that once this gets done, it's just a quick fix into the, it's just going to take from here to here and then move it into Precinct Six. So, and then we'll let the voters know that they're changing.
From a voting standpoint, though, the people in those precincts are going to be voting for different representatives, so they'll have different ballots than the people in the rest of the county.
Precinct Seventeen and Six would have House District Eighteen on their ballot. Precinct One, Seven, and what's the other precinct? What's seven, or what's? Eleven, eleven, thank you. I went blank on Pendroid. So those three will be House District Seventeen and then the other two will be House District Eighteen.
But at this point, there's nothing that we need to do till you have more information?
No, we're going to set a hearing for next, the next meeting.
Okay.
And then the resolution will be done on the seventh, or on the sixth. We have to have that submitted to the Secretary of State's office by December, so.
Easy peasy.
For you three.
There will be a public hearing, but in reality...
We're still required to do it?
Yeah.
But there's just, they can come.
You can say you don't like it or you do like it, but it still has to be done.
You have to have a public hearing to let that Fairfield and precincts, if that's the right... I have two roads, or two lanes over on the first one. And then it's like, why wouldn't they have followed my...
So they can come and comment, but it's a done...
It's a done, yeah. Yeah, it's done.
So the last I heard was that it was being discussed, no, we could make public comment, but did it get ratified by the Legislature?
You can make, yes, you can make as much. It was submitted to the Secretary of State's office on the twenty-second.
But it's not, it's not...
It's done.
It is done.
It's done.
They have ratified it.
It is done.
Yep.
It is done. That's controversial.
Do you want to direct your...
Directly, or not even elect, except for anymore, I mean, it's...
I mean, I...
Oh, they're just...
But they still have...
You can comment.
You can comment to us, but we don't have any ability to change the outcome.
No.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Well, and...
It's the legislative...
And the public hearing is not necessarily for, they can comment, but it's not for comments to make changes. What the public hearing is for is to let these people know that it's, that this is what it's going to be. And they have a right to come in and say, man, I just really don't want to drive to power and, well, you have options.
The most.
Of absentee ballots. And right now, I think we're at, we're pushing eighty percent on absentee ballots.
Thanks, Paula.
You bet.
Commissioner report.
I have a Commissioner report on, when I campaigned last year, I was talking to the public about an emergency services building. The ambulance barn in Shoto is not in good shape, but we have had, we've received some ARPA money. And at the Mako deal last week, we were assured that we can expend those funds. They're one-time-only funds from the federal government and we can expend those on a building. So I think with the last ARPA came in last week, Paula?
Well, that, yeah.
It came in while we were at Mako. So with the confirmation of that being in our budget, I think that we need to start the process of actually building this emergency services building. My thought is that we'll have a committee of the affected departments and we will have open hearings to take public comment on their thoughts, but we really have the opportunity to get this building done. And I think that we, if we don't use this ARPA money, it has to go back to the Federal Treasury, so there's really, it's a great opportunity for the county to finally get this building done. The affected departments would be the Coroner, Search and Rescue,
you made that, right?
EMS, Elections, and the Health Department. And we've been kicking the idea around now for over a year now, probably two years now. So I think that we will start that ball rolling.
Joe, again, the identification for this is ever on the county-owned property to the south of the Sheriff's.
Yes, between there and the city shop on the east side of the alley.
Okay. And do you refresh my memory, because it's been a while since we talked about this, we have approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the leftover hospital district?
Five hundred and ten.
Five-ten?
Okay, just...
Yep.
And then the ARPA funding in additional to that, while Saul Park...
One point one nine three million.
One point one nine three.
And then we received a LA TCF, more federal funds. We received that in October. It's the County and Tribal Funds. I'm not sure what the LA is for. And there was four hundred and fifty-seven in that, which brings us up to a little over two million.
And you want to expound a little bit on each one of those departments because of the issues they're already having?
Yeah, we can. The Coroner is currently using the funeral home for their activities. The Search and Rescue has no building, they're parking everything outside. They have no place to meet. EMS, and we were contemplating having a meeting at the ambulance barn in Shoto and maybe can take a few pictures. It's not in disrepair, but it's no longer what they need. I mean, they need an upgrade. They're the only ambulance barn in the county that hasn't been remodeled. And we've been waiting to figure out how to accomplish that. And the Health Department, I met with Louis King three times in the last year trying to figure out a way to expand that. I guess it's in the last two years because of COVID, they were just swamped. They needed more personnel, they didn't have the ability, we didn't have the ability to enlarge it. And there was no formal agreement between the hospital and the county. They just, they built the building and let the Health Department use it for a long time, which has been greatly appreciated, but we think they would be better fit into a county building. So that was kind of the impetus of why we've been trying to figure out how to get this done.
And possibly adding mental health to that?
If, yeah, if there's an open office, maybe we could use a couple offices for mental health with us down the road a little bit. But the big deal, I want to emphasize, there won't be any requests for a tax levy for this building. That was one of my main goals, is trying to get it built with no tax levy. So our next step is we'll probably meet with all the affected department heads and hash out what their needs and wants are and we'll go from there.
And just to reiterate, these federal monies that have come in, if they're not used in a specific way, we have to send them back, so.
And in a specific timeframe as well, so. That's all I got.
I don't have anything.
A public comment? If not, hearing any?
Is there on any subject?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to see if there's any more discussion with the hospital fund and being a Lions Club member, and I know a few guys have reached out to a few of guys and trying to figure what's going on. We've got set aside a hundred thousand dollars, then we set aside for some matching funds. Am I right? I mean, I guess we're not against anybody else submitting or applying to try to get some of those funds. From basically a year ago, are the numbers that we've seen from the contractors to try to build the second phase is about a fifty to sixty thousand dollar increase just in terms of cost and materials.
Right.
We're looking to move forward with it, we're looking to do something and want to know from the Commissioner's side of what goes on. If we don't believe we're barking up the wrong tree, we just want to know how to go about making our case, if it's got to be applied for differently or is there any deadlines for some of that stuff to, that you guys are looking at trying to to do something with some of it or where it goes? Or if, can we think we're in the running in terms of we have, the pre-words just had a big health center, they do the blood drawings there, and I know there's criteria that are involved with what goes on. Either we're looking for guidance to make it work right or if there's anything out there that... Yeah, I guess I'm, as long as I said, I have a little time to come up and just see if the, if that was ever discussed anymore or what we need to do from our side or if there is some kind of deadline, you're looking to try to say we're going to make some decisions by X month, X date.
We had a meeting in Fairfield and discussed that. The hospital fund specifically, when we closed the district, we had to get a certain percentage of the taxpayers to sign the petition to close the district. When we had that drive, we assured the taxpayers that the money that was going to be in that fund would be spent for healthcare services in Teton County. So that was the restriction that we put on ourselves. And the reason for that was, and sorry, Alan, but we had a couple people come in and say, you know, we'll work and we'll do this drive and we'll get the signatures needed, but we really don't want the money to be used for road graders.
Right.
And that was a quote from, sorry, Alan, I already apologized. Not that that's not a legitimate county expense.
No, I understand, I understand.
But they wanted to make sure that that money would be for healthcare purposes only, so.
Long Mike just came in, right? I've been, well, Mike Johnson's been in touch with me a couple of times. And I'm kind of new to this whole hospital thing. I wasn't in office when that happened.
Yeah, there's Ron and Jim.
Yeah, and these guys had that all taken care of and pretty much taken care of when I came on board. And I told Mike that quite some time ago.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's what he wanted to hear. Because he keeps all that...
So my view is...
At this point, I don't know what I can do.
My view, and I'm only one vote of three, but my view is that this emergency services building, the Coroner serves the whole county. Search and Rescue serves the whole county. They're not necessarily medical, but EMS serves the whole county. And the Health Department serves the whole county. They go to every part of the county. So we've got a new building proposed that is not completely healthcare, but is, I would say, at least eighty-five percent healthcare. So I think that in my perspective, the money from the hospital district is a really good fit for this building. And it'll, there is a definite need. We're thinking about having a meeting up at the Shoto Ambulance Barn because like I said, it's the only one that hasn't been rebuilt since I've been here. And so I think the hospital district money is a really good fit for this building.
Is there a dollar amount you're looking at towards that? Do they have any, is there a number they're looking at?
As far as the cost of the building?
Yeah, or cost, what you're looking to maybe...
We haven't really, we've kicked the idea around for a couple of years and the size of the building that we have kicked around is twelve thousand square feet. So it will definitely eat up the five hundred and nine thousand dollars pretty quickly. And we couldn't figure out how to get it built until we had the, these one-time-only federal funds, so we really, it's just kind of dropped in our laps. And I think that it's a really good use of the hospital funds and it's going to be a good use of the ARPA money as well.
And it's not raising the taxes for anybody? That's what we're trying to do.
Which is a huge deal because taxes are a big deal. We're an agricultural county and I wrote a check to Teton County for twelve thousand bucks last year.
Yeah.
It's not a small deal. So when I was campaigning, my hope was to figure out how to do this without burdening the taxpayers.
Right.
So I think we've got a, hopefully, a win-win. But we'll have public meetings on it when I get direction from the department heads of what their needs are and we'll just start the process.
And what timeframe are you looking at for that in terms of?
There are deadlines with the ARPA money and I think the first one is twenty-seven, twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
So we're going to, we're going to probably pursue this fairly quickly now that we have the, we think we have enough funding for the whole building. So that's my hope, anyway.
Because the building, as proposed even a couple of years ago when we were talking about it, would have cost more than the five hundred and some thousand.
Yeah, and we never even, I mean, we weren't even close enough to go out to bids. I did talk to a contractor and just by the square foot, it was going to be a little under two million dollars. And that was before all this other stuff happened, so I'm sure. We think we have two point four million dollars that we could allocate towards it and with the cost of everything, we're hoping that that's enough.
And that county growl is pretty expensive.
Goes up every day. Unfortunately, we have property that we don't need to acquire a new chunk of ground someday.
Yeah.
So.
And it'll, it would be a good location, because the search and rescue should be fairly close to the sheriff's office, because they've had issues trying to keep everything coordinated when we have had to have search and rescue. The coroner would be right across the, it would be within a hundred feet of the sheriff's door, which would be fantastic. And the, the health department, in my business with Louis, the health department would prefer to stay in the hospital area, because they coordinate a lot of things. But Melissa had told me that if it came down to it and she had to move, they would move, because they're, they're cramped in their current space, and we have no guarantees in the future on that too, so.
From a parking perspective, because at least going through the pandemic, and let's hope we don't do that again anytime soon. But they really, to be able to do those outdoor pull-up vaccine things, would there be parking space available to do that at this location?
Yeah, and I talked to Deb earlier, and there's some power poles along the alley. We would probably have to take those power poles out. She said Northwestern Energy thought it would be about fifteen thousand dollars to remove those, but then we would have, everything from the alley would be clear. And there, I think there'd be about twenty feet between the alley and the building, so there'd be the ability to have angle parking along the whole hundred and fifty-foot building. We anticipate, there's an old building south of the annex that, that Brian uses for stuff. And in the proposal, there'd be a small shop, a heated shop area for him. So we could remove that building, and that would give us parking all the way from the annex south to the street. So I think we'd have ample, ample room for parking. And if she had to have a drive-through, the original plan was for it to be on the west wall of the building, so people could just go down that alley and drive through and go through by the annex and the sheriff's office and exit. I think it'd be a good flow. I think it'll work. We just have to get all the D's crossed and the I's dotted.
But once you, once you get your meeting with your affected stakeholders, then imagine getting an engineering, architectural company to do plans.
Yeah, and, and we would, we would talk with Staley. We have them now, so we have an engineering firm. And I'm hoping that we could do it with just the engineering firm, but I haven't confirmed that, because when you have an architect and an engineer, things get pretty complicated and expensive pretty fast. So my, my hope is that we can just work with Staley on the engineering, and that will be enough.
And the other thought is that it would be a metal building, so it would be engineered for this area anyway, as far as strength.
Yeah.
And then we're talking about if we can get like eighteen-foot walls, sidewalls, because everybody's short of storage. And all the new rules and regulations is sheriff's department, the health department, everybody has to keep records for five, six, ten years. Uh, they have to have someplace to put them. So the storage above the ceilings would, and it'd be right there for them.
So I have a question for you, Mel. Having gone to Dan's workshop on Monday, the public right to know and participate is very clear in my mind. So if I have a department head meeting just for needs of the building, does that need to be public? That, that was.
Yeah.
So I will, I will try to organize that, and I will absolutely let you know ahead of time. So we can have that open to the public as well. And this whole process should be open to the public, because it clearly meets the requirements.
Checks everyone off.
Yes. So I'm hoping to do that next week at some point, but I'll let you know as soon as we, as soon as we get schedules down to where we can do that. So we'll have more meetings.
Oh, some meetings.
Yes, sir. Uh, any other comments? We certainly appreciate you coming up and, and.
The feeling I guess I'm getting, or what I'm understanding, is the hall and whatnot doesn't quite have a high enough percentage of a health and emergency service, is that?
That, that is my opinion.
That's what I feel.
And that, that was, when we had our meeting in Fairfield, that was the opinion of the commission at that time. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But thanks for coming up.
I know you guys are going to be in the process of appointing the board members for the tax appeals board.
Yes.
And with Dan's information fresh in my, fresh in my mind too, we haven't done a great job of making sure those tax appeal board meetings are noticed appropriately. So we can work.
Work on that.
When you get your new board scheduled, we can figure out a way to get those noticed on a regular basis.
Okay, yeah.
We've only been having the twenty-one year.
So that's probably why.
Yeah, no.
Because I send an notice out every meeting. That's set by statute. And we do have, I think we are to get closed. We did put that on there for the tax payment.
No, so I put it on the next agenda, so we would have.
Yeah, okay.
We only, we only got one application.
How many did you need?
One.
One.
Yeah, so we may have skated by.
We're traveling again. We started today. We got our loader fixed. About all I have, other than snowstorms.
Perfect, perfect.
Any other comments before the commission? If not, a next meeting will be the sixteenth. Same room, I think, unless we get another.
We, we may have, I'll, but I'll, I'll contact the department heads and try to set that up now.
Okay.
So we can get that noticed.
So with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Yeah.